Okay. Good evening. Actually, you have to start this.
We're going to?
We're gonna reorg first, so it's up to you, baby.
All right. We're on the record. The first order of business is the election, nomination and elections for the position of chairman, right, for 2025. Is there anyone that has a motion in that regard?
I motion to nominate Tony LaPari.
I'll second it.
Any other nominations? All right. Can we have, we have a motion and a second for Tony to continuous chair. Any other vote?
Okay. Yeah, first of all, roll call for attendance. Moriano, Anarada.
Here.
Metallo.
Here.
Baskinjer. Travato.
Here.
Carminiola.
Here.
Iania.
Yes.
Ivaron.
Yes.
Fiatorolo.
Here.
Lapari.
Here.
And then on the motion for chairman, Tony Lapari, Anarada.
Yes.
Metallo.
Yes.
Travato.
Yes.
Carminiola.
Yes.
Iania.
Yes.
Ivaron.
Yes.
Fiatorolo.
Yes.
Congratulations, Tony.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's always a pleasure to serve you guys. Can I have a nomination for vice chair?
Take a nomination.
Mr. Iania. Nomination for Rich Travato. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Carminiola beat Mr. Fiatorella to it. Any other nominations? Hearing none, roll call on that motion.
Mr. Anarada.
Yes.
Mr. Metallo.
Yes.
Mr. Baskinjer. Oh, Mr. Carminiola.
Yes.
Mr. Iania.
Yes.
Mr. Ivaron.
Yes.
Mr. Fiatorolo.
Yes.
Chairman Lapari.
Yes. Okay, on to appointments. We're gonna do them all in one shot. Can I have a, I'm gonna make the nomination for attorney on the board Lou Rago, secretary Steve Burry, transcription services Margot Biblin, and our planner being Burgess Associates. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Metallo is the second. Any other nominations or questions or issues with these professionals? Hearing none, roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Anarada.
Yes.
Mr. Metallo.
Yes.
Mr. Travato.
Yes.
Mr. Carminiola.
Yes.
Mr. Iania.
Yes.
Mr. Ivaron.
Yes.
Mr. Fiatorolo.
Yes.
Chairman Lapari.
Yes. Can I have a motion for adoption of the rules and procedures that you guys got in your packet for the year 2025?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Metallo, second.
Second.
Mr. Iania, roll call, please.
Mr. Anarada.
Yes.
Mr. Metallo.
Yes.
Mr. Baskinjer. Mr. Travato.
Yes.
Mr. Carminiola.
Yes.
Mr. Iania.
Yes.
Mr. Ivaron.
Yes.
Mr. Fiatorolo.
Yes.
Chairman Lapari.
Yes. With that, I'd like to make a motion to close the reorganization meeting. Can I have a second? Second, Mr. Fiatorolo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we got the meeting. All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Township of Fairfield's Board of Adjustment meeting for February 18th, 2025. This is our regular meeting. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, only about nine more times do you need the roll call, so go ahead.
Mr. Moriano.
Here.
Mr. Anarada.
Here.
Mr. Metallo.
Here.
Mr. Baskinjer. Vice chairman Travato.
Here.
Mr. Carminiola.
Here.
Mr. Iania.
Here.
Mr. Ivaron.
Here.
Mr. Fiatorolo.
Here.
Chairman Lapari.
Here. Also in attendance tonight is our attorney Lou Rago, our township engineer and board secretary Steve Burry, and our transcriber Margot Biblin will be transcribing from YouTube. And Jennifer Miller, thank you very much for your assistance. Let it be stated that adequate notice of the time and date for this meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and delivered to the Star Ledger in the progress, and that no application will be allowed to start its presentation after 11:00 P.M. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December 3rd, 2024 special meeting?
Make a motion.
Mr. Iania, second. Mr. Metallo, roll call.
Mr. Moriano.
Yes.
Mr. Metallo.
Yes.
Mr. Travato.
Yes.
Mr. Carminiola.
Yes.
Mr. Iania.
Yes.
Mr. Ivaron.
Yes.
Mr. Fiatorolo.
Yes.
Chairman Lapari.
Yes. Just to put on record, Mr. Baskinjer called. He had all intentions in coming to our reorg and regular meeting tonight. He got stuck on a job and he was too far away to get here in time, so we will miss him tonight. And with that said, Lenny Iania will be a voting member tonight. On to old business, application 2024-10 Donato Salvatorello, 21 Ralph Drive, lot 5101, lot 18.17, requesting C variances. This was carried from October 15th. Gentlemen, how are you tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Counselor, could you state your name for the record again, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Rago, Michael LaPari. I am an attorney with Mailerbaum Barrett. I'm counsel to the applicant, Donato Salvatorello.
Thank you.
Counselor, how are you tonight?
I'm doing very well.
Good. It is your ball.
Thank you very much. So I believe everybody will recall, we appeared before this board in December of 2024 seeking some minor variances to allow Mr. Salvatorello to construct a garage, to make a three-car garage, like most of his neighbors, on Ralph Drive. And as a result, it required two minor variances for the side yard setbacks, both the individual setback and the combined side yard setback. We had previously eliminated additional variance and we are also, as a result, reducing the impervious coverage by a couple of percentage points. At the last hearing, we went through pretty much everything as far as putting our case on. We, you know, went through the hardship criteria and advised that this is an issue that due to the unique shape and size of the lot, there is a notch that is in the back of the property, the 20-foot utility easement, that requires the house to be a little bit pushed forward, and as a result, it didn't have that extra third car garage. In addition, we believe we demonstrated that this is a better planning alternative. It allows the cars to be placed inside rather than scattered about the driveway. It's a very nice cul-de-sac, and we think it'll be a better alternative. Mr. Salvatorello also acknowledged that as a condition of any approval, that he would re-side and re-roof the entire house, so that everything would match, and it wouldn't look like a piecemeal addition. It would look like a brand-new construction, which we hope that it will. I mean, well, we hope we get the approval. As a, after where we left it last time, we had been asked if we could tighten it up a little bit, so we went back to the drawing board. We tightened it a little bit. We also redid some of the dimensions on the plan. One small housekeeping item with the plans that were revised and submitted. I don't know that they were redated, so as much as they say revised 11/26/2024 on the plan, they were actually revised December 6th, 2024. So the old revision and the new revision didn't have a new revision date. I apologize for that oversight, but the plans were revised. Mr. Burry issued a review memorandum that indicated what the new dimensions are. Again, we tightened it up. We adjusted the interior dimensions of the garage to demonstrate that we need the additional room because of what is now an existing, I guess, landing to go into the side of the house. We still need that extra step that'll be inside the garage, but that sort of requires it to bump out a little bit on the side. So we made the changes that we believe the board was requesting. We did tighten it up as much as we could, and we're here tonight to present this final plan, hopefully to the satisfaction of this board based upon the comments at the last hearing.
Mike, just for a little bit of housekeeping, if you are approved tonight, would you be able to send a new set of copies with the revision date to Steve?
Absolutely, 100%. That's, we should've done that already, but that's not a problem. We'll do that right away.
Okay. Do you have any more testimony from the applicant, or would you like any questions? It's up to you.
Yeah, I don't know that we need any direct testimony. Again, where we left it last time was, can you tighten up the garage, which we did. We made it a little bit smaller, and we changed the interior dimensions from the old plan to the new plan to show more accurate dimensions. I think there was some issue with that landing where it didn't show that it was a full three feet, or it, we maybe marked it as three feet, but it didn't actually reflect the three-foot landing that is required. So now we have those dimensions on the plan. So I believe, you know, at this point in time, if we have any questions for us or about the plans, we can answer them, or if you have any questions for Mr. Salvatorello, he can answer them. But again, I think this reflects what we understand to be, you know, a compromise as to what was asked of us and what we could actually do to make it an actually workable project.
So questions from the board for the attorney or for the applicant?
I have one question.
Sure, Mr. Carminiola.
I'm having a hard time reading these, so I'm gonna ask you. You're gonna be 10 foot away to the gutter from your neighbor's property line. Am I correct? Because I can't find it on here anywhere.
Yes, that's correct. Still under oath, sir. Yes, you're still under oath. No question.
Okay, not to the foundation, but to the gutter.
Correct.
Thank you. Go.
Other questions? Seeing none. The, on the last set of plans, the last time you were, you were here, you were given 2.3 impervious back to us. You were taking some patio pavers out. I see on the plan that that idea's been scrapped.
No, we did it already. It's, I already took the pavers out.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
There was two different areas I took the pavers out of.
If you go to.
Yeah.
So we're gonna refer to the fourth page of the set, which is the Sykes to Walker survey. So the, yeah, so the paper patios around the area of the pool, as a concession, those were to be removed. Where it says paper patio, I guess to the right side of the plan, I'm not gonna give you the direction, but to the right side of the pool. And also, there is to, at the left side of the property line, adjacent to the existing dwelling, there's a small paper patio. Those two would be reduced, or removed, I'm sorry, as part of the plan in order to give back a little bit of the impervious.
Okay. I hate to.
Just show the revised.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just if you can, when you give the revision, make sure that it's also on there.
Yeah.
All right. Besides that, any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none. I'm gonna open it up to the public for anyone that may have any questions of this applicant. Seeing none. Bring it back to you, Mike.
Again, I don't have anything further. We went through at the last hearing all of the criteria regarding the hardship and the better planning alternative. This is, I think, our second meeting, or it's been posted a couple of other times. We've had no neighbors come out to complain. We testified last hearing that Mr. Salvatorello spoke to all of his neighbors in that area, especially those to the, I guess, the dead-end side of the cul-de-sac where the people will actually be driving. There's only about six houses that'll actually pass his house. No one had an issue. He testified to that. No one came out. And again, we believe that this satisfies the criteria that we discussed last time. We went through it in greater detail. I know we have a packed house, so I don't need to reiterate that again for everybody here. But again, this is gonna be a better planning alternative, and it'll be a more desirable visual look for the house and for the neighborhood, and we would just ask that you approve the variance requests.
Right, thank you. Just to open it up to the public for any comments, seeing none. All right, back to the board for discussion or a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a relatively straightforward application based upon the applicant's showing of willingness to work with the board, making the reductions that he's made from the past application. In addition to that, we're really talking about, at the end of the day, I think a setback from 15 feet to 10 feet, I think is rather the minimum. I think in the final look at this, that this is a benefit to the neighborhood. He's enhancing that street and his own property values, and I would make the motion to review the application.
Mr. Anarada's got the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Travato, roll call, please.
Mr. Moriano.
Yes.
Mr. Anarada.
Yes.
Mr. Metallo.
Yes.
Mr. Travato.
Yes.
Mr. Carminiola.
Yes.
Mr. Iania.
Yes.
Chairman Lapari.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good week.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. All right, on to new business. Application 2024-13. Tamakualaa, wait, all right, let me start over again. I really wanted to get this right, by the way. Meul and Svetla Ghandi, Gandhi and Tamakualaa. I really need to know whether that was right or not.
I think you were pretty close, Mr. Chairman.
Pretty close? All right, good.
Good evening, everyone. Entering my appearance on behalf of the applicant, Svetla Gandhi and Mehul Tamakualaa. They are the owners of the property located at 293 Hollywood Avenue, John Vettery, 3 University Plaza, Suite 207, Hackensack, New Jersey. You know, in many ways, this application feels like it is a carry from a, from a long time, because the applicants have been working really hard with their professionals. But I also want to commend Mr. Burry and Jennifer Miller, as well as Mr. Rago, because we've all had dialogue with respect to this application. I think the result of the application, I hope you'll agree, as you see this evening, is, is an improvement to what was initially looked at, and we have some constraints, like we see in this municipality based upon flood zones and restrictions with respect to what the applicant was able to do. We've submitted the pictures of the site, and I think that the pictures really speak volumes here. You have some absolutely beautiful homes on this street as you carry into where the new developments were built, I guess, at this point, several years ago. And this is one of the last of the original homes on that side of the street, and they're proposing a very elegant home with a lot of architectural detail to accommodate their, their family. While they typically don't do this, if it would please the board, my client would just like to read a short statement, because this is very exciting for them. They've been at this for quite some time, so if it pleases the board and the board feels that they would hear this, it's just a short statement.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really the same thing as if he would, that your client was gonna testify and you were gonna ask questions.
Certainly.
So sure, of course.
Okay.
Sir? Are we, are we okay with noticing publication? All right. John, just give me a, give us an idea of your game plan tonight.
So the game plan tonight, you know, like I said, we've had, we have some great professionals on this, and we have, we do have a lineup. We'll try to be very efficient with our time. The owner would like to make a short statement, just speaking about this and how we arrived here this evening, and I'm sure also to thank the professionals here. And then our lineup, typically, I start with the architect. We're gonna start with Mr. Hogan, who is the engineer from MAP Engineering, because a lot of what you have tonight is a result of engineering. These are engineering conflicts we're not able to fill, so we have this issue. The variance we're seeking tonight is based upon the number of stories on the house, and part of that is a result of the fact that we cannot fill the lot. So the lower level, the existing basement, which is at grade, cannot be filled and is causing the issue that we have this evening. Additionally, we have Larry Appel from Appel Design Group, who's gonna testify in the area of architecture. And then, lastly, we have Charles Hype from Dresner Robbins, who is going to testify in the area of professional planning.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Sir? Sir, if you could raise your right hand when you're ready, I will swear you in. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony that you are about to give and/or statement you're about to read shall be the truth, so help me God? Just say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. If you can state your name. It's.
My name is Mehul Tamakualaa. M-E-H-U-L. Last name is T-A-M-A-K-U-W-A-L-A.
Thank you.
It's pretty easy if you sound it out. Yeah. Members of the board. Can I start, or are you ready?
Sure.
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present our case today. My name is Mehul Tamakualaa, and this is my, and my wife, Svetla, behind me. Not present today is our eight-year-old daughter, Avia, who is in second grade at Stevenson. We're here today with our partners to make a presentation request to build our dream home, a vision that we have painstakingly crafted with much passion and dedication. We have been residents of Fairfield for the past 13 years, and we have loved it here. The home at 293 Hollywood Avenue in Fairfield sits on a lot with a significant downward slope. We bought the home in July 2022 with hopes to have it built by now, but with timing and other considerations, that, they have, that's delayed our process. This home is not just a structure for us. It represents, it represents a lifelong dream, especially for my parents, who immigrated to this country in 1987, and have worked their whole lives to support myself, my sister, and now my wife. They have a business in Sussex County that, and have managed to live in a small apartment above the business for the past 26 years. With my father, age 74, and my mother, age 70, in mind, we wanted to build this home with them so that they could finally take, learn to take it easy, which will be hard for them, and enjoy what we've been enjoying all these years in Fairfield. From the Fourth of July celebrations to National Night Out, to the Winter Wonderland, Fairfield does a terrific job of fostering family togetherness and building a sense of community. They have been deeply, they have been deeply involved in the design of this home and have waited with us to see the vision come, this vision come to fruition. It is designed to meet their specific needs, and it is a place where we hope to create lasting memories of the family. We chose this location due to its proximity to the Town's Recreation Center and various activities, and are integral to our family-oriented lifestyle. Having lived in this town for 13 years, we have developed strong roots and a deep connection to the community. In addition to being longstanding residents, we have contributed positively to the town by providing temporary housing to two families who are in urgent need and have been, after being displaced from their homes. We didn't do this to receive any praise or credit, but it was a testament to our belief in the community and our desire to support our neighbors. In conclusion, we kindly ask for your consideration and approval of our request so that we may continue to contribute to thrive within this wonderful community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna jump into our first witness, Joe Hogan from MAP Engineering.
Would there be any questions for?
Yeah, why not?
Making a statement?
Yeah. He did make a statement. He's, he's, he was sworn in. I would think if the board has any questions of the owner, or if the public has any questions, now might be the best time to do it.
Questions for the owner applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Mr. Travato.
In your testimony, you had said, and your partners?
I just meant the architect.
The professionals.
The professionals. Apologies.
Thank you for clarifying.
We're not moving in.
No.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Metallo.
May I? Mr. Mahul? Yes. Mr. Tamakualaa.
Yes.
May I call you Mahul?
Yes.
Thank you. Is, did microphone have a bright green light or a dim one?
It's a green light.
But is it dim or bright? Push it once. Does it get brighter?
It's on, yes.
Okay. Because I saw the gentleman in the back was having a little trouble hearing, and I, I thought your mic might not be on. Thank you.
You asked my question, so. Can, can you just real quick go over your, you're, right now, you're anticipating your, your wife, you have one child, or?
Yes. One child.
And some, in, in parents and different family members. If you are, if we are to approve this tonight, and I'm sure your professionals are gonna give us a great pitch about the floors and why we should give the variance, but obviously you would commit by the ordinance that was, this would never be a two-family home. It would never be rented out or sectioned off. It would all be for you guys.
Yes, it would be for us. Yes.
Okay, great. I don't have any other questions. Anybody have any questions? One. Yeah. Okay. No other questions. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'll just, I'll put it up to the public if anyone has a question for the applicant. Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe Hogan? Hogan, if you could raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. The record, state your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Joseph Hogan, last name H-O-G-A-N.
Thank you. Joe, you're very familiar with this application, very familiar with the site. If you would give the board the benefit of your professional and educational experience?
Of course. I graduated from Stevenson Institute in 2013 with a bachelor's degree and have been working for MAP Engineering in projects involving land development such as this since 2013.
Your license is current?
It is.
Okay. For Mr. Hogan, as a professional in the area of civil engineering?
Absolutely, except especially from Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, Joe, I'll let you take it from here and give an overview of the plans that have been submitted. I don't believe you have any exhibits, so everything that the board has has been provided to the board already.
That's correct. So what we're looking to do here is really just kinda bring this property a little bit more modern. A fairly minor addition from a footprint perspective, redoing the driveway, adding a pool, cabana in the backyard. We will be providing seepage pits or dry wells in order to account for any additional stormwater runoff. And I guess really the main reason we are here is because this addition does create a variance for the number of stories in the dwelling. Now, before we get to that, I think it is important to note that the actual height of the structure, when looking at the average grade to the ridge height, is within conformance to the town's ordinance. The height is calculated to be thirty-three point eight feet, where thirty-five is the maximum. However, due to the environmental constraints on the property and the existing basement being considered a story, that does bring the total number of stories in the house to three and a half. Now, there is, the western side of the property does slope down away from the rest of the house and does lie within a flood hazard area.
Just to explain to the board a little bit, if they're very familiar with hearing this on this application and others, but just explain the constraint and just be responsive to Mr. Burry's letter with respect to what we've done thus far with the NJDEP.
So with the DEP, we have already actually obtained our permits. The main permit in consideration here is... It's a general permit by certification number five for reconstruction and expansion of a building. The main constraints of this permit are that the lowest livable floor is above the flood design elevation, as well as the footprint of the house not increasing more than seven hundred fifty square feet. So the footprint of the addition is six hundred fifty square feet, so we do meet that requirement. As well as the existing first floor of the house, which is to remain the lowest livable floor, is already greater than one foot above the flood hazard elevation. Now, being in that flood hazard area, our usual tactics for trying to mitigate this variance are not acceptable. Usually we would just try to fill in the area around the basement so that it's not considered a story. However, with the flood hazard requirements, we are not able to fill in the area.
And you've had an opportunity to review Mr. Burry's letter. There's currently no stormwater management at the site?
None known.
And you've proposed two sets of one thousand gallon seepage pits and that will be reviewed by the municipal engineer? That's correct?
Correct.
Trying to think, did you have any other, any other comments with respect to Mr. Burry's letter? I believe everything was acceptable.
I believe so. I think it really kind of covers the application in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions or get into a little bit more detail if anyone requires or requests.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan, can you just, I'm curious, the two-foot-six block wall, that's, obviously that was part of the DEP plan approval? Or was it or?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
These plans that were submitted are the approved plans by the DEP.
Was that more for aesthetics or was it more for drainage reasons? Is there a reason why? I'm just curious. It's not a major issue. I'm just curious as to why there's a two-and-a-half-foot wall there.
So that was implemented so that we can level out the yard a little bit more with, and partially with the flood hazard requirements. The pool area is being raised up a little bit. So in order to offset the increased flood elevation, we're cutting out a little bit on the high side so that overall there will be no change in the flood on the property.
I see. And you talked about how it drains to the west. So basically, just for the record, for anyone who's watching at home, the left side of the property, look facing the front door, is basically unusable, right? So...
Correct.
Yeah, so...
From a development point of view, yes.
So that became, you know, somewhat of a hardship for, you know, I mean, you could have, if the whole lot was usable, the logic would have been, if there's a jump wall about the amount of stories, like we said, you could have filled in around the basement or you could have went with a larger house that extended out on the property more to get more living space. It might have been a little more expensive with some more foundation, but you could have adjusted a little bit better to the ordinance on stories if that part of the lot was usable. Am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Hogan?
That's correct. Well, three and a half.
Considered three and a half.
Other questions for Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Hogan, the only reason why we'd be considered three and a half is because to the left side of the house, part of that foundation is exposed.
Correct.
If it was filled in, you wouldn't even be here tonight, am I correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Let me ask you this. Out of wall-to-square footage of that foundation, what percentage do you believe is exposed? Fifty percent, thirty percent?
Maybe the architect would better answer that question?
I think the architect would be better prepared to answer. Good question. I think he'll be better prepared to answer the question.
That is a good question, Mr. Criminiol.
Every once in a while, I get one.
Other questions of the engineer? Hearing none. Like to open it up to the public for any questions for the engineer? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, our next witness is Larry Appel from Appel Design Group. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Yes, my name is Lawrence L A U R A N C E, Appel, A P P E L, Principal of Appel Design Group Architects located in Florham Park, New Jersey. I hold a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering and master's in architecture. I'm here tonight to be admitted as an expert in architecture. I have active licenses in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Incorp certified as well. And my New Jersey license is in effect and valid.
Larry makes it very easy. He's offered as a professional in the art of architecture.
Yeah, he's accepted, of course.
Thank you. Okay.
Even though I didn't go to Stevens.
If you went to NJIT, we could look the other way around.
The drawings that I have up on the board are identical to the ones in your package, so there's no new exhibits. These are dated for 11/24. The site engineer went through everything and gave thorough testimony on the site and the project. We're here this evening mostly involved with an addition over an existing footprint. There's small conforming additions to the front and rear and essentially a second floor that's being added. This is located in the R-1 zone. The project is generally consisted and consistent and similar to other homes on the street. They're two-story homes. This is a one-story home. I don't know whether those homes were new construction or additions renovations, but I did look for consistency in the neighborhood as well. The house presents itself as a two-and-a-half-story dwelling consistent with the zoning ordinance from the front. However, because the existing grade is scooped out and dropped in the rear, the house has an exposed or what we call a walkout basement. It's a common feature. We do this on lots of houses. It's, in this particular case, the problem is we can't change the grading at the rear. And that's really why we're here before this board, looking for relief. If we could change this, adding a retaining wall or something like that, we certainly would. So reminder, the house is conforming in height. That's what the engineer gave testimony on. And the rear exposed basement per the zoning ordinance is considered a story. Now, there was a question raised by one of the board members that the first-floor story indicates that the definition in your ordinance shall mean the lowest story that begins at grade, providing that on a sloping lot, which is what we have, the first story shall be the story that has a minimum of fifty percent of the floor to ceiling height above grade.
You sure you want to tackle that ordinance?
I think going to the commissioner's question, if we look at photo number three, I think that may be helpful because I think that's the essence of your question as to the extent, I mean, anecdotally looking at it, it looks like it's about forty percent, but...
Right. So I don't, I did not do a calculation, but...
A general idea.
Okay, so...
Just a general idea.
The general idea is that it is considered per the ordinance as a story. On the front and the right side, it's up quite high, which would be what you would normally anticipate and expect. But on the left side of the house and on that left rear corner, it's dropped down as a full walkout. So when you balance that off, I believe that you are, you know, somewhere around five feet or so to average grade. So...
Here's what I was looking at. I was, I didn't walk the property today, but I did get as close as I could get.
Great.
Like you said, the front of the house and the right side of the house were all level. Comes to about maybe, I would say halfway to the backyard and then slopes down, like a big slope. So from that point there to around the corner, where it comes back up again, would you say that's like twenty-five percent, thirty percent of that foundation is exposed? That's what created the problem for you?
Yeah, I would probably say under fifty percent.
Right, because the whole backyard, when I looked today, it's still, like you said, if you're looking at the backyard, looking to the back of your house, it's to the left. And then it just comes right down and then it flattens out again. And I believe it flattens out there because if I remember, that house was owned by a farmer that had that property and he parked his tractors in there underneath. So that whole area in there got filled in to the right of you years ago, but his property was the same all the time.
Yeah, in fact, there is, if you look at the pictures that we submitted in photo number three, there is actually a garage door that looks rather odd in the back that's being proposed to be French doors, but, and that may have been the reason.
I think so. I'm just looking for a general number to say, okay, thirty percent of that foundation really would create this problem.
I would say, you know, maybe thirty percent or maybe even a tad under, so. And the height on the architectural drawings is a bit confusing because we have heights measured from various different places. The engineering drawings show the building height is thirty-three point eight. We are permitted to be thirty-five feet, so we are under that position. And again, this is measured to average grade. So one of the things I wanted to mention is, in this particular case, the basement is considered a story per the ordinance. However, the building code does not. And for me, that's another important distinction. Because the building code does not, there is no safety concern to be worried about here. So it's only a two-and-a-half-story dwelling per the building code, which measures six feet above average grade plane as the maximum to the story above. The attic as well conforms with the building code as well as the ordinance. And again, this is another safety concern. Yes, it is considered a half-story, not a full story. The project and the proposed design, as I mentioned, presents itself as two-and-a-half stories from the front, consistent with the neighborhood. We have architectural treatment, consistent with many of the neighboring houses as well. The house, you know, another little issue is the house is sited at a corner where the road bends. There are environmental flood hazard area to the left of the house, so that area will remain in its current condition, which is thickly wooded. And the same is that there are mature trees at the property line at the rear. So this property, the issue that we're seeing in here will really be just for the homeowner to look at. It's not going to impact any of the neighbors. This is also an oversized lot. It is more than double the lot that is permitted in this zone. So just to sum up very quickly, I think that the addition is well-planned, both for the neighborhood as well as the environmental restrictions that were part of this property. The only visible portion of the exposed basement is at the rear. It will be hidden. And in our professional opinion, we believe that the project will not negatively impact the neighbors or the neighborhood.
Thank you. No further questions for Mr. Appel.
Question. What's a scullery room?
A scullery?
Scullery room. On your first floor, on the first floor, it's called scullery. I'm just curious. Because it's a very ominous word. You could make us very nervous.
I'm eager to hear the answer, Mr. Chairman. I did not notice that. You were sworn in, so why don't you answer?
You're asking the applicant, come on up. What is a scullery room?
You want me to answer?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. The wife knows it. We just want you to know, we know she knows.
It's like a second kitchen. It's like a second kitchen, like a, kind of like a hidden kitchen where we can like cook and then, you know, bring food out.
Okay. All right, gotcha.
She lives on Pinterest, so...
I threw you a curveball, but she hit it out of the park, so. I, you know, there are, word gets around in a town when something goes on. A house this size isn't, you know, usual in our town to this big. Then you start hearing things about bathrooms. As an architect, can you explain to me, how common is it to have a nice family that wants to build a house, that have in-laws and have family members? You know, there's two, there's two powder rooms downstairs. There's a bath downstairs to the in-law room. There are also five other bathrooms upstairs. So explain to us how and why that's a good design and a serviceable design for this one family home.
So what used to be quite common was that you first had, it was common to have a primary bathroom in the past called the master bathroom. And so you would have that primary and then maybe one second bathroom that was typically called the kids' bathroom. As time went on, that morphed into having an en suite and a Jack and Jill. What has become much more common is each bedroom having en suite bathrooms. It has just become more common on a luxury house now. So it's what was unusual twenty or thirty years ago is actually quite commonplace now.
So, you know, supposedly saving money, backing the bathrooms up to each other, so the plumbing walls all one, but now it's a different, it's a different animal than it used to be.
It's just become more of an expectation. It's actually right now more common than not.
Even the Brady Bunch kids, Mr. Chairman, had two. The girls had one, the boys had one. Even then, back then in the seventies, they had, they had their own. And Mike and Carol probably had one.
I thought the girls and boys of the Brady Bunch had to share from the different doors in the same bathroom. Any other questions for the architect? Hearing none. Like the, I'm sure the owners would commit to the material use. Not that we care, you know, usually commercial and industrial we do, but for a house this size, it will fit the design and the feel of the neighborhood? I see some heads nodding in the background, so.
Yes, my opinion, and that was actually one of the things that I wanted to look at, you know, before appearing before this board and that it's just the opposite. This house feels odd because they're all two-story, two-and-a-half-story homes that are significantly larger than this home on the street.
Okay, great.
You know, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, just one more question. The foundation that you're going to be adding on to the house, if I looked at these plans correct, it's just going to be a crawl space underneath there, am I correct? It's not going to be down to the level of the other basement that's there now?
Well, there's existing basement and then there's existing areas to the front that are proposed as crawl space as opposed to full basement.
They're existing there already?
No, they're, I think, I believe they're constructed new.
Okay, that's what I meant. It's not going to be a full basement down.
But they're all, but these are all conforming, you know, with, and these are all, and those areas, I think, that you're referring to are at the front of the home.
Right, it's just where it's marked crawl space.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to open it up to the public for any questions of the architect. Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Okay, our last witness is Charles Heydt. He's going to testify in the area of professional planning and review this proposed home in the context of the neighborhood and put on his planning testimony. Charles? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do, yes.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
Yes, Charles Heydt, last name is spelled H E Y D T.
H E Y D T.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. Just give the board the benefit of your professional and educational experience.
So I'll stay in New Jersey. I'm a master of city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I was licensed in 2010. I have, this is the first time appearing before this board, so good evening, board members. Over the past ten to fifteen years, I've appeared before municipalities throughout the state, but in this area, being in Essex, a... But in this area, being in Essex, a little close to Passaic and Morris, um, I've appeared before North Caldwell, Montville, Wayne, Montclair, East Hanover, and Parsippany, all within the past three to four years.
Okay, and your license is in good standing?
Good standing, yes.
You're accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Charles, take it from here.
Yeah, I'll jump right in. Um, so I was, um, benefiting from a lot of the work with the design team and the architect and the engineer, having been done and coordinate a lot with the, the borough and also, um, a lot of the regulatory agencies, the DEP. So these plans were well-advanced when I got into them. But from a planning and zoning standpoint, uh, it really does come down to, um, that building height in stories as a, a variance request to the, to the board. We are in the R-one district, which single-family homes are permitted. Uh, just a brief description of the neighborhood. Um, Hollywood Avenue is a collector road. It's also a county road. We're benefiting, this is a really nice neighborhood. Um, there's Hollywood Avenue Park, which is right across the street from this, from this property. Uh, a little further west is the Fairfield Township Library, uh, some recreation fields. There is the, a tributary to Passaic River that is immediately west of the subject property. So, um, other than that, it's predominantly residential. And as I think the board mentioned, uh, this area, um, north of Hollywood Avenue was a subdivision of an old farm use. And many of the homes on, I wanna pronounce the, the street names, um, Nalsnick?
Nalsnick, yeah.
Nalsnick, uh, Drive and Sarah Lane, um, are all very, very similar in terms of architectural di, design. They're newer, they're all have their own unique instances. Many do have dormers in the attic. But, uh, predominantly all relatively newer in terms of, of development. What Mr. Apple was saying, uh, earlier is this single-family property is essentially the only one-story home that has not been renovated or reconstructed to be consistent with those modern, modern homes. So with that, uh, I do, uh, offer to the board that the application, in my opinion, does touch on both a, a C-one hardship case and a C-two benefits outweigh the detriments case. Um, the board is well-aware at this point of the topographic change on the properties. That grading with the existing basement, um, which we're utilizing, uh, does present calculation difficulties in overall building, um, building height and stories. But as was mentioned, I think clarified by one of the board members, it's only twenty-five percent of the property, although it's substantial. So the calculations do, um, comply with the, the overall building height, um, that's permitted. It is a flood plain, so we are respecting that we're not encroaching into the flood plain. That's coordination with the DEP. Um, but obviously, that's another existing condition on the property. And with respect to, um, the oversized nature of the property, it's a very large property, especially with respect to zoning standards. But, um, we are not substantially increasing the footprint of the property. And this was a concept that I think the board members mentioned. So we are working within the existing, relatively within the existing footprint of the home, which is, again, an, an existing footprint. For those reasons, I do think there's, um, uh, some practical difficulties in complying. While we probably could make the house a little shorter, but bigger, it's better that we conserve the land use impact, avoid the flood plains, uh, and, and, uh, deal with the hardships and the topography with, with what's being presented today. With respect to, uh, where the benefits outweigh the detriments, uh, again, we are, um, proposing a substantially renovated and new, uh, almost new construction uh, in terms of aesthetics, um, from what's there today. But from Hollywood Avenue, it will appear as a two-and-a-half-story structure. So it'll be very consistent with the other homes along Hollywood Avenue and in that residential area. In the rear, uh, is where you see the basement level as well as that attic space. So the shed dormer in the attic will only be visible to those at the property and maybe a few adjacent properties, um, in the rear. But there are no aesthetic impacts from, um, the streetscape along Hollywood Avenue. And, and lastly, the idea of filling to meet zoning requirements is a little bit counterintuitive in terms of reducing impacts. So what we're doing here is we're maintaining the grading as it approaches the flood plain, um, which in my pen, in, in my opinion, is the responsible thing to do, and it's, it's what's being per, permitted, um, by DEP. So that's, I think, part of the, the benefit of, of the design as well. Getting through to a full testimony, I think we further purposes of the M-U, MLUL in terms of special reasons. We're a single-family home. That's an establishment of an appropriate population density. Um, we are also providing a substantial, uh, enhancement to the aesthetics of the structure. So that furthers purpose I for promotion of a desirable visual environment. With respect to the negative criteria, uh, I see no detriment to the general welfare. I think the plans are very balanced. They're accommodating and expanding, um, family. I don't see any sort of impacts to aesthetics or, uh, um, other sort of activity related to a single-family home. With respect to the detriment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, again, we're in the R-one. We are substantially complying with all other zoning requirements. Building coverage thirty, uh, thirty-five percent, uh, actually, building coverage twenty percent permitted, twelve-point-two percent proposed. Impervious coverage, thirty-five percent permitted, twenty-eight-point-two percent proposed. We do benefit from a larger property, but we're respecting that. Um, all the other setback requirements are substantial, uh, in terms of excess than what's required. Uh, so front yard, thirty-five feet propos, required, forty feet's proposed, five feet in excess. Rear yard, thir, forty feet required, and we're at ninety-five-point-eight feet. So we're substantially back from our rear yard adjacent neighbor. The pool and the accessory structure all comply with the zoning requirements with respect to height and setbacks. So I don't see this as an impairment of the zoning ordinance. And then lastly, just with respect to the master plan, um, I recognize it's a single-family home, but, uh, there are land use objectives to maintain and enhance the existing areas of stability in the community, to preserve and protect residential character and overall density in the community, and to encourage new and redevelopment of properties to take into account the aesthetic character in the community. So I think we're actually furthering those land use elements or land use objectives from the, the recent master plan and reexamination report. That completes my ter, direct testimony, but.
Thank you, Charles. Well done. Uh, no further questions.
Questions for the planner from the board? Two, I'll, I'll have a question. Asking for, I guess, comment more than an answer. Practically, the basement isn't livable. You can't put a story, you, you can't put a, you can't live in that full-time with the, this is below the flood level. So if somebody on this board didn't like the extra story, that, that would force, that would force the applicant to only be able to put a, one, a ranch up, basically, right? I mean.
A ranch with a dormer, yeah.
A ranch with a dormer.
What you'd see today is what you'd, essentially, the zoning would require, would permit.
Right, and the, um, and you feel as though with, you've mentioned all the qualities that it's below, it's below, or far below on everything, impervious. And, um, e, even, no one's brought up the safety of the fact that if you're gonna have a nice big house with hopefully a lot of loving family members in it, this, this driveway is a horseshoe, and it's gonna be safer to pull out forward onto Hollywood than most of the houses that are on Hollywood. So from a practical standpoint, the, it's, the, the lot has squeezed the applicant into this. The hardship is severe.
I, I, I would say, given the flood plain, the topography, yes.
I would agree with that. Um, any other questions of the planner?
I have a quick one for you. Neighbor's in the back. How close is the closest neighbor to that house that's gonna see that addition?
Uh, so we, we did a tour that, that neighborhood. Um, there is vegetation. You, you have to find the right angle to find the line of sight.
I had to find that today.
So there is vegetation, exist, existing trees. Um, they're bare now. Uh, but in the summer, spring, fall, they're, you know, providing a lot of dense, um, landscape buffer. But, uh, I can, I can get an estimate on the dimension here. Just give me one second. So I'm working off of an aerial. We don't have this, uh, dimensioned on any plan, but I'm gonna take it from the nearest corner.
And just as you're looking at that, Commissioner, so the, the rear yard setback required in R-one is at forty feet, and this property is proposed at ninety-five-point-eight feet. So just from the structure to its own lot line is almost a hundred feet.
Correct.
So really, it's quite a distance away.
Yeah, it's my knowledge that subdivision was conforming. That was done in the neighborhood behind it, so that they, that presumably, they all have forty feet, forty or fifty feet of their own backyard before this structure. So, anecdotally, there's a hundred and fifty feet there.
And I'll do one better. It's, it's seventy feet on their property. So, um, we have two-and-a-half, uh, rear yards. They have one-and-a-half rear yards. We're, we're dealing with proportions that are in excess of what the zoning calls for, so.
Thank you.
Other questions for the planner?
Yeah.
Seeing none. I'd like to open it up to the public for any questions for the planner. Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles.
What do you think, Counselor?
Okay, a ju, a ju, really very brief summary. We've heard a lot of good testimony, um, particularly from, uh, from the owners, who spoke with a lot of passion about this property being their, um, their dream home. We learned what a scullery room is, so we learned tonight. And, um, you know, I, I think, you know, the most remarkable thing for me about this property, it's the, these are beautiful homes in this whole neighborhood. And this is the continuation of that. This is probably the largest lot there. This lot is, um, required to have fifteen thousand square feet. There's thirty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet, um, in this lot. We, requirement of a lot width of a hundred feet, we have a hundred and seventy-seven-point-four, and lot depth one-twenty-five. There's almost two-hundred feet of depth. So this, i, it is a large home, but this lot can certainly accommodate that, especially given the vegetation. Uh, we have a park across the street, and, uh, and there are some other positives. I'm glad the chairman mentioned about the horseshoe driveway. Um, you know, we see this, um, you know, looking at county roads, being able to have a workable turnaround, looking for, uh, safety. Um, we also have some stormwater management that is being proposed at considerable expense that we don't have now. And in addition to the fact that this is creating a desirable visual impact to this neighborhood. You know, right now, it's a very dated home, and it was a, you know, a home that worked, uh, at the time that it was built. But, um, it does look odd compared to all the other new homes in the area. And it's a very elegant proposed addition. I think that, uh, we've put on the legal proof such that this, um, proposed addition and, uh, essentially, new home could be constructed without any negative impact to the, um, neighboring properties, and that the board is within their legal right to approve the variance request that's here this evening. And I thank you all again for your time.
I'd like to open that to the public for anyone who has any comments. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and/or emotion. I would just like to say that although it didn't sway, it, it didn't completely sway me in the fact that I'll be voting yes to this application tonight. The family is a good family who has helped some, um, some friends in town, some, uh, during some tragic times with fires that they had in their homes, and opened up their house and rented it out to, uh, to people to help them. Did it quickly and hung on with them month to month until they were prepared. So I, I think it's a good family. I think it's a good project. I think that, that some of the people in town, when they heard how big everything, it was, they, people have gotten nervous and they talked a little bit about, you know, oh, my gosh, what are they building there? But I, I, I think lawfully and morally, um, it's the right thing that this family should thrive in Fairfield, uh, in that house. So I'll be voting yes tonight, if anyone has any other comments or if someone would like to make a motion.
Yeah, so the way I see it, that chairman, I agree with counsel. I think the proofs have clearly been met. I really don't think this, uh, calls for a lot of deliberation. I would move to approve application number two-zero-two-four-dash-thirteen, subject to the house always remaining a one-family home and, and not a two-family home.
Grab a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Carminiola's the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moriano?
Yes.
Mr. Honorata?
Yes.
Mr. Metallo?
Yes.
Mr. Trevato?
Yes.
Mr. Carminiola?
Yes.
Mr. Iannini?
Yes.
Chairman Lepari?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Board, pleasure being here.
Thank you. Do we, do, do we need a break, or do you wanna move right into the next application? Okay. Do you need a break, or would you like to move right?
Let's just go. Yeah, we're fired up.
All right.
Larry.
No, thank you. Two minutes.
All right, on to our next order of new business. Application two-thousand-twenty-four-dash-fourteen Essex Regional Educational Services, three-thirty-three Fairfield Road, block three-eight-zero-two, lot fifteen-point-zero-two. They are here for, um, C variance, okay.
Steve, have you good unnoticed application?
Yes.
Mr. Petry.
Good evening, uh, Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Burke. I'm an attorney with, um, Antonelli Cantor Rivera in Livingston, New Jersey. Uh, we represent Essex Regional Educational Services Commission. As you, uh, stated, Mr. Chairman, located at three-thirty-three, uh, Fairfield Road, Fairfield, New Jersey. And this is our C variance application, and with me is Mr. Mike Petry, who is our, uh, engineer, who will be, uh, testifying for this application.
Is it John Burke?
Yes.
B-U-R-K-E.
Yes, thank you.
How many witnesses do you plan on tonight?
Uh, just Mr. Petry. Just the one witness, yes.
Putting all your eggs in one basket, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go.
All right, Counselor, your ball.
Mike, you put your right hand up, please. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? I do.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
J. Michael Petry, P-E-T-R-Y. Thank you. I'm with Petry Engineering, one-fifty-five Passaic Avenue in Fairfield, New Jersey.
John, your engineering license is, uh, still in effect?
My engineering license is current, my architectural license is current, and my planning license is current. And I'll be testifying as both an engineer and planner tonight.
Okay. Unless the board wants to hear more, Mr. Petry's appeared in front of us many times.
Yes, he has. He's obviously accepted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm gonna refer to a handful of presentation boards that are on the easel. I have copies, if, if it helps the board, um, to see them close up, all printed in color.
Do we have these, Michael?
Um, most of the, some of the information that's in here relates to planning, and so you do not have it. But the rest of the information is in.
If you don't have it, you'll mark it and pass it around.
Well, why don't we just send it along?
Okay.
So, yeah, the, 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 this that we're getting now is completely different than, than this.
Okay.
We'll mark these, uh, A-one as a packet. How many?
There, there are five sheets in the set.
All right.
So A-one.
A-one, uh, five sheets. Aerials?
Well, the, the first sheet is aerial mapping, and that aerial mapping is the same mapping that's on our, uh, sorry, first sheet, but we've added the zoning to it. Uh, the second sheet is our SP-two, our site plan. That shows the location of the sign. The following sheet is a study that we did of signs along this stretch of Fairfield Road. And the final two sheets are measurements associated with those signs to the base.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna mark this as A-one as well, because this is just a bigger version of what you're looking for. what you're looking at. The subject property is designated as Lot fifteen point O two in Block thirty-eight O two, it is more commonly known as three thirty-three Fairfield Road. The parcel has over two hundred and eighty feet of frontage along Fairfield Road, it is slightly irregular in shape, having a depth on the, um, on the west side of, uh, approximately a hundred and sixty-four feet, and on the east side of approximately a hundred and eighty-six feet. The building, as you see in the aerial, is situated towards the front, there's parking underneath this building, and there's parking around the perimeter of this building. The parcel is zoned HD, as are all of the properties on that side of Fairfield Road. The properties on the opposite side are in the L3 and L1 zone. And I'll just put it on the record that our, the zoning map on our title sheet shows this as an R1 zone instead of an L1 zone, it was a little tricky, little tricky piece of the map, but we messed up. It's been corrected on this, across the street is an L1 zone and an L3 zone. Uh, the tax map does show a drainage easement going down the, uh, easterly side of this property, overall, the property includes forty thou, forty-six thousand forty-seven square feet, or a little over an acre of land. What we're here tonight to discuss is the proposed sign that the applicant is seeking to have placed in front of the main entrance to the building. The sign panel is four feet high, eight feet long, and it's double-sided with an LED sign. The sign is set on a matching base, as you can see, that base is two feet, eight inches wide, three foot, six inches high. The base has the address of the property on it, uh, the maximum, the maximum sign size allowed per your ordinance is thirty-five square feet per side on a double-sided sign, we have thirty-two square feet for the double-sided sign. The sign is set back fifteen feet from the right-of-way and immediately in front of the entry doors, the fifteen-foot setback is what is required by your ordinance. There is a seven foot six overall height of the sign, where your ordinance allows us to be twenty-five feet maximum in height. However, in the HD zone, the requirement is that the sign panel must be set fifteen feet, I'm sorry, ten feet above the grade, and we are not ten feet above the grade, and that is why we're here, we're three foot, six inches above the grade. So we're seeking a C2 variance, benefits outweighing the detriments, and, um, what we did as part of that analysis was to look at the signs up and down this particular stretch of Fairfield Road. So the third sheet in this set, um, basically what we did is we started Hollywood Avenue, and we came down to, uh, about where the entrance to the, uh, to forty-six is. Beyond that entrance, as you crest that hill and you go down, you get into a commercial zone, a C-zone, it's shown, uh, on the other sheets, but basically in, in the area past the church, it becomes C-zone, this commercial area, and the signs are different in those zones. So we identified a total of nine signs, and they're numbered here, uh, the two seventy-seven Fairfield Road Identification Sign, um, the sign at three hundred, which is for, um, the food facility, um, there's signs in front of pretty much all of these office buildings and mixed-use buildings that are along here, um, and what we found is there are a total of nine signs, and there's only one that conforms with the ten-foot minimum clearance, and that's the party center. Even the Greek restaurant sign is a little over nine, but it doesn't make ten. Now, to be fair, the signs on the southerly side of Fairfield Road, in a different zone, don't have that same ten-foot height requirement of clearance, but I think it's important to include them in what we're doing, they're, they actually have a, a maximum height of six feet on that side of the street. But when you're driving along Fairfield Road, as we all do, you don't really get to see zone lines, what you get to see is streetscape, and in this particular instance, it doesn't matter which side of the road you look at, the signs are very similar in nature. And to refresh everybody's memories, we'll take you down the street side. The two seventy-seven Hollywood sign, that sign's thirty-four inches above the ground, that's in the HD zone. The LeGrand sign is only nine and a half inches above the ground, that's in the L3 zone. The Environmental Services sign at three oh one, thirty inches above, uh, that's on the H, uh, HD zone. RTI is across the street, uh, that's thirty inches above the grade to the bottom of the sign panel. Contingling down RTI three twenty Fairfield Road, that's nine inches above the grade, the party center is ten foot two, that's your compliance sign, ladies and gentlemen, and the Greek kitchen is nine foot zero to the underside of that sign, the Fairfield Reformed Church, forty-eight inches, and the Carrados, rest in peace, forty-two inches. So what we have here is a proposed sign that has a scale that's similar to the majority of the signs as you drive down the street. In my opinion, that's an important consideration, because that's part of the visual environment, and a desirable visual environment is one of the purposes of planning, item I under municipal land use law. In my opinion, this is significant, because when you drive along Fairfield Road, regardless of which side of the street you're looking on, the signs are generally consistent, they are lower, they are lower to the ground, and I understand the ordinance, I understand why you have a ten-foot minimum clearance in a highway development zone, because when you're driving on Route forty-six, you want the signs to be higher, you want, because you're going fifty-five, sixty miles an hour, and you wanna be able to see them from a greater distance. In this particular stretch of Fairfield Road, regardless of what zone you're in, hopefully most people aren't going that fast. So I think that the desirable visual environment is an important factor here, but in this particular case, I think it's also important to note that if the sign were constructed to the necessary height of ten-foot clear, it would be hidden by the evergreen trees that are in front of this building. So from that perspective, the proposal promotes a, a safer transportation system, and that is, uh, in the MLUL as well as a purpose of planning, and that is to provide safe transportation traffic. If you can't see a sign, you end up breaking late for a sign, you end up breaking late for a sign, you cause accidents. So I believe from a practical perspective, both the desirable visual environment and the free flow of traffic are appropriate here. Um, from a practical perspective, I see no real detriment to the requested variance, given that we are reflective of the development pattern in this stretch of the street. From a negative criteria perspective, in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the public good, in fact, it's my opinion that the variance actually promotes the public good by creating a more visually pleasing environment along the driving corridor, as well as a safer vehicular circulation plan. While I understand there's a need for ten-foot clearance along forty-six, I also understand that this particular zone is centered on Route forty-six. Fairfield Road has a very different feel, it has a very different, uh, community aspect, and clearly it has a very different speed limit, and I think the applicant's sign is reflective of this property's frontage along here. As such, I believe that the intent and purpose of the zoning plan are not in any way being impaired, either in their intent or their purpose, since the standard is clearly developed for a different corridor. As such, I offer that the proposal that is before you meets both the positive and negative criterias under the C2 standard, and this board is within their rights to grant the requested approvals, and that is all I have. Better than a break.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Question, the, um... No, seeing the difference between signs that are ten-foot high, signs that are down lower, um, I think a lot has to do, you didn't mention much about the sightlines, I think that a lot of times you may want signs high for protective sightlines of people pulling in and out of the street, but in this case, would you agree that the sightlines are, are good sightlines?
Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely and positively correct. I wrote that down, I didn't get, I just skipped that line. There are two driveways that access this property, there's one on the easterly side of the site that brings you in and out at this location, and there's a second on the adjacent site that includes access into this parking lot. So there's two driveways, and our sign is in front of the front door, it couldn't be further from the driveways, and the Chair is correct, if you have a low sign and it's near a driveway, you create a, a sight distance problem for the drivers who are exiting the site, or even those who are entering the site. By having the sign in the middle, we're well away from the driveways, we're well out of the, out of the sight triangle requirement for those driveways, and it is another benefit of that sa, safer circulation plan that I neglected to mention.
Now, the, now my second question, Steve, Steve, um, I always thought that when you measure a sign, the square footage of a sign, you measure the box itself, and you would measure the piece that, the leg that goes down. Is that, you, isn't, I think.
I think only if that, only if that portion's being used.
Oh, only if it's being used for anything.
Yeah, for.
So if it doesn't have a number on it or anything like that, it doesn't need to be taken into consideration.
I believe that in. Let me check, but I believe. I believe that in the HD zone, they measure the sign panel.
Just the panel, okay.
It's, it's a different ordinance than the rest of the zones, but Steve, the other one.
But even with that, I mean, it would be an extra, it would be over by nine, nine square feet, then they would ask for, then I would say, we'll just ask for an additional variance, but if, if it's in, it's not in the HD zone, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, you know, moment. I guess that would be considered a pylon, the, uh, stem up, um, and that's only if that area is used for advertising, that you would include it.
Okay, good.
So with just a street address, I don't, I don't think that's gonna qualify.
Okay. Those were my questions, does anybody have any other questions? Um, Mr. Metallo?
Mike, the, uh, the sign will be illumi, illuminated.
It's an LED sign.
Okay, uh, the hours of operation of the business?
It's an office, so I would think that it's.
Okay, would, would you, hey, accept, uh, approval on condition that, that there be a time limit when the light goes off?
The LED portion of the sign?
The lighted portion, whatever, LED or what.
I wouldn't, I don't think they'd have a problem with that.
Okay, and this one doesn't really, I'm, this business has been in operation at that location for a while, has it?
Quite a while, yes.
And is the reason for wanting the sign, there is a bit of a sign on the building, because it attracts more business?
The, I, I don't, I don't think they're in, I don't think they're in the, uh, business, attracting business, I think it's for visitors.
For visual, for visitors.
Yeah, for visitors who are coming to find the building. Right now, as I understand it, there's a, there's a street number on the building, and that's it, and, and because of the trees, it's easy to miss the street number, so.
So would a condition of approval, is ten o'clock reasonable?
I would think so.
Board members, is ten o'clock reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Carmoniola.
I'm looking at the sign here, and you need this sign so that people know it is education, Essex Regional Education, right, am I correct, it's LED?
Yes.
But I see over here you have marked here USB. Now, is that for you guys to change the sign and start advertising, and, you know, flashing lights and stuff, or is that just something you put there, that's the way to program that sign?
That's, that's how that sign is programmed, so this panel.
So that'll be like that all the time, it's not gonna be any advertising or anything on it?
Uh, it's, it's gonna be like the sign at the library, it's gonna be like the sign at the, uh, at the, the Recreation Center, they, they have LED panels, and, and if there's something going on there, that's what appears in the panel.
Okay, so that's what that's, so I'm gonna do.
Yes.
And there are, there are codes to the amount of how, how often you can change the flash and the color, and there's a whole section.
I don't, I don't expect that this is going to be flashing.
Right.
Um, I, I expect that if there's a message on there, you know, there's a message on there.
And if something was wrong with that, Anthony, they could always adjust it, if they were putting too much, that somebody can go over by them and tell them what the ordinance is for, how often you can, things change, I think it was at the Franklin, I would've heard about that once. Other questions for Mr. Petry? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up to the public for any questions, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that your case, Mr. Burke?
Yes, uh, yes, sir.
Do you have any, uh, comments, any summation, or do you wanna rest and let the board?
I think we'd like to rest, I don't believe there's anything to add to Mr. Petry's testimony.
And then open it up to the public for any comments. Seeing nobody, bring it back to us for a discussion or a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, application number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, uh, I think that the presentation clearly showed that, uh, this sign would, uh, be consistent, would be best placed as it is shown at that dimension, with the condition as discussed, that the illumination would be, uh, shut off at ten P M.
Okay, that's a motion from Mr. Metallo, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Travato is the second roll call, please.
Mr. Moriano.
Yes.
Mr. Anarata.
Yes.
Mr. Metallo.
Yes.
Mr. Travato.
Yes.
Mr. Carmoniola.
Yes.
Mr. Iannia.
Yes.
Uh, Chairman Lapari.
Yes. Good luck to you guys.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, finally for us, I'd make a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion.
Mr. Carmoniola, second. Second, Mr. Iannia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to close, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're outta here.